We appreciate the input.
Do you have agenda item details up there?
Yep, that's the same.
I'd like to call the April 13th, 2021 City Council Meeting for the City of Hayden to order. It is 5:00 PM and we are located in the Hayden City Hall Council Chambers. Kaitlyn Kling, will you...
Could you just do a roll call first?
Let's do a roll call first. I put you at the wrong place. Roll call vote, please, Abby.
Council President Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember Panabaker?
Yes.
And Councilmember Deleng is absent. We do have a quorum.
We have a quorum, which is good because we need that before we do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Kaitlyn Kling.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Abby, there was just the one on the meetings and the minutes that you sent out. Was that right? Were there any changes? Was that our area on?
There's no changes.
There's no changes? Okay.
If you just want to know on 1A what meeting we are approving the minutes for.
And what meeting would that be?
On March 23rd.
That's coming up.
It is?
I will make sure that that's set up. Hearing none, we will move forward. Also before, because it's at... Is there anyone online that would like to speak during the visitor or public comment portion? I don't hear anyone or see anyone, so please know that right now until we get things working correctly with everybody together, we just want to make sure that everybody's included. We will move forward. The consent calendar. 1A approval of city council meeting minutes for March 23rd, 2021. 1B approval of consultant agreement with Architects West for Public Works Facility Master Plan. 1C approval of professional services agreement with JUB Engineers for preliminary engineering services, gravity sewer and H6 lift station and management reserve fund. 1D approval of consultant agreement with Sky HR Consulting LLC for compensation survey. 1E approval of consultant agreement with Epic Land Solutions for Ramsey Road Extension Project Right-of-Way appraisal and negotiation. 1F approval of fiscal year 2021 second quarter treasurer statement. I'll wait and make a comment. That was really a good report, by the way. 1G approval of consultant services agreement with Financial Consulting Services, FCS Group, Inc. for the impact fee study update. 1H approval of engineering services agreement with Iteris for traffic modeling for impact fee study update. 1I approval of consultant services agreement with JUB Engineers, Inc. to update the city's GIS system. 1J approval of Hayden area regional sewer board wastewater treatment plant facility upgrades payment request. 1K approval of conversion of FSA, HRA, and Cobra Benefits Administration from Benefits Exchange Northwest to Employee Benefits Corporation. L ratification of March payroll, and M approval of bills for payment. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar as read?
Moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mayor, I just have a couple of questions. Concerning item E, the approval of the consultant agreement with Epic Land Solutions, my question is, does that dollar amount for this contract include purchase the right of ways?
For months, many of the rest of the philanthropy establishment have been badgering the country to take a vaccine they claim is absolutely perfectly safe after being told to know yesterday.
Whoever is on the phone.
Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine has injured six people. That's true, but...
Whoever was listening to vaccination information that was just put on, Ed, I don't know if that was you. I need you to mute. Yeah, I don't know who's listening. I'm sorry, Councilmember Roder. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'll just repeat myself. The question is regarding item E, the approval of consultant agreement with Epic Land Solutions for the Ramsey Road Extension Project Right-of-Way. My question is, the dollar amount that's in the contract, it's a hundred and some thousand, does that also include the acquisition of the right of way?
No, that is for the appraisal process and the negotiation process. The actual purchase of the right of way is a result of that process.
Okay, so we have no idea what that will be?
It's estimated at $2.1 million.
Okay.
That was before changes that came through, so yeah, the hundred thousand. I wish that that included.
Yeah, it would be nice. I had no idea. I thought I asked because I know that we were circling around the airport and maybe we got a good deal or something. Second question, it just happens to be that the facilities committee is dealing with Honeysuckle Beach, and so there's one little question I have on payables, and it's, we are paying Dalton Water Association for boat launch operation maintenance cost. And is that just for water? Are we buying water from them? Or... It's not a big amount. I'm just curious as to what that's for.
No, we pay them... Go ahead, Alan.
We buy water for our bathroom facility, drinking water, and that comes from Dalton Water Association.
Okay.
From the pump that's right next to the...
Well, no, it actually comes over the hill from the tank.
You could get it directly from the...
Is it 117?
The pump is...
That's air vision.
Because we didn't pay...
It's nothing.
Yeah, we haven't paid that yet, so...
That's why I thought you were going there.
It's on there for approval, but it's not...
It's not been paid.
We held off on that one.
Right, right. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions? Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Abby.
Council President Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember Panabaker?
Yes.
Since we did not have any requests for public comment, we will move to unfinished business. 3A action item approval of ordinance amending to titles 4, 6, 10, and 12 and to repeal and replace Title 11. Donna.
Minimize?
Yeah, we just minimize it.
By the way, it's had a life of its own the last few hours, so good luck. It moves, it moves. Go ahead, Donna.
So, this is a public meeting. It's kind of titled Title 11 because when we went through and had to modify Title 11, it kind of spurred those other chapters to be kind of dragged along in the process. So, the Title 11 updates took the 22 chapters that exist today and reduced them down to eight. It reduced the redundancy and inconsistency across the chapters. It took the definitions and separated those out so that if you were looking for uses, you'd go to the use category of the definitions. If you were looking for something related to building, you'll go to the building portion. If you're looking at measurements, you'd look at the measurement section, and then there were some miscellaneous that didn't really fit anywhere very well. It took the zones and the overlay districts that used to be in individual chapters, and it pushed them all into tables. When you're looking on the Internet, and so much of what were driven by is web interfaces, and you had to look through scroll through all those lists of uses, there was kind of inconsistencies, and this allowed that to go away. So, we have allowed uses, conditional uses. They're all in a single table. We identified the neighborhood commercial node design standards in the central business district, and the allowed uses that go in both of those, and then design standards that were specific to uses within that table. And then we had design standards as well that are applicable to any use across the city. Those would be like landscape design standards, site standards, lighting standards. Put that in there, and then we're also moving part of those very verbose information to standard drawings that hopefully will come back in front of you in a couple of weeks to get those approved as well. So, as part of the process, we worked really, really hard at being extremely transparent to everybody that would want to know information about the code changes. And so, when we thought we were ready to go to a public hearing with planning and zoning, and we'd workshopped with city council and planning and zoning, we actually sent the code out in draft to everybody that ever requested it, and then some. So, we sent it to developers of both residential and non-residential. We sent it to architects, engineers, realtors, various agencies. Those would be the electric companies to make sure the lighting standards were actually, you could actually build it. The water jurisdictions, we sent it to lots of folks, and then utility providers as well. So, just, I'm going to kind of summarize these chapters, and I know that you guys have had ample time to read it. It's been on the website for the better part of five weeks, so everybody's been in and out of that code. So, Chapter 1, we took everything that was administrative, kind of salt and peppered throughout Title 11 as it exists today, and pushed it back into Chapter 1 so that it was all in one location. Chapter 2 is all about the zones. So, the zone definitions from the comprehensive plan, instead of having zone definitions that were one thing in the code and one thing in the comprehensive plan, they're now the same. The use table is for all the zones, setbacks and buildable space in one single spot, on a lot table, lot designs, and then those specific design standards to each of those Chapter 3, we removed inconsistencies and conflicts with state statutes. In Chapter 4, those are the general design standards. Design standards required across all zones, designations versus those for specific uses found only in Chapter 2. In the lighting standards, today's lighting standards say you have to have a minimum of 0.2-foot candles, and you need to not bleed off onto your neighbor's property. And that's all that the code says. So, with the LED brightness that has occurred, we have had lots of complaints from folks that have horrible glare of moonlight in their bedrooms all night long because of the glare that's emanating from it. But if you take photos of that same property, that light really does end at the property line and doesn't bleed off into the right of way. So, we've added some language in the lighting standards to help mitigate that requirement, both cutting it off, adding shielding so that it can't glare to the next door, or hopefully won't glare to the next door neighbors, as well as some consistency as far as lighting standards in the streets. We reduced the ability to allow for garage parking. In today's code, if you have a two-car garage, you get two car parks in the two-car garage, and you get two parking spaces in front on the driveway. And most folks know that very few people actually utilize their two-car garage for two cars. Generally speaking, they can get one car in there and then two in the front, so that's the way we've approached the code. Parking standards. It was noted by several folks that neighborhood commercial nodes are really an area that we want walkability. We want the neighborhood to walk to the neighborhood commercial node, not necessarily driving up to it. So, we reduced the required number of parking spaces to be consistent with what we have in the central business district area as well. There was exceptions that you can request for lighting standards, like if you have a baseball diamond and you want to light it for a huge area that you want to light for brighter than what's allowed otherwise. And so, with those areas that are near the airport area, we clarified the language for that exception to occur there, and what would need to be required to make that exception allowable. The landscaping standards, we removed the requirement to have live ground cover in the buffer zones except in the street frontage. And we also added language that related both to routine maintenance versus structural maintenance of stormwater areas. So, if you have a joint stormwater that's landed on private property, then the homeowner that has the property or the property owner that has the area of the joint stormwater, they would irrigate that swale area, and they'd mow it and maintain it. But if the swale stopped functioning, it would be the requirement of the homeowners' association or property owners' association to repair it. Changes in those two differences. Chapter 5, we did virtually no changes to, except that we added the two new zones, the mixed residential and the mixed use, and we removed references to the residential multifamily. Chapter 6, in the planned unit development, we modified the language in the density bonuses and updated it to include dedication of land to public entities, community art, significant recreational area improvements, that didn't have a reimbursement from park impact fees. We also addressed the landscape buffer and removed it where the non-residential PUD abuts non-residential use zones, and we removed the condominium plat in the PUD and left it in the subdivision code, so it references the condo plat in the subdivision code instead of having that duplication occur. In Chapter 7, we've always called them special use permits, or we have since I've been at the city, but oftentimes people think, oh, it's just a special use, it's an allowed use, I just have to come in and get permission to have it. And they don't realize that there are conditions that are associated to it to allow it to be there. So, we've changed the name to be a conditional use. So, I don't know of any specialties permit that's come through with no conditions that have been associated to it. We added a section referencing public buildings, complexes, and correctional facilities to recognize that a conditional use permit would really be between two government entities, which should really require a memorandum of understanding memorializing those conditions. Chapter 8 is the variance code. It really had no huge changes. We did add some language regarding required submittals to keep those consistent, again, with the various applications. So, title... That's not the right section, but the site triangle is, I think it's 614, actually. The Idaho statute states that site triangles are measured based on 40 feet along each intersection roadway with a connecting line. So, you find the property corner, and you measure 40 feet horizontal, 40 feet vertical, and connect them, that's your triangle. The adopted access standards identify a site distance to be able to see when you're parked at the stop bar, and you're able to look to the right, and you're able to look to the left. You have a certain distance both ways that you're supposed to be able to see based on the speed of the roadway that you're intersecting.
And wasn't that the intent anyway?
It was, but it's...
Okay, no, I...
So, we had proposed some language in the document that went to public hearing with planning and zoning, and prior to that meeting, we really pushed it back and forth trying to figure out how to meet both the state statute and to address the speed on the roadway. And so, we want to leave the area in this paragraph that is underlined in double, instead of taking it out, because we talked about taking it out. We want to leave it in there. And then we also want to add, unless by some other means, as approved by the city engineer in red, so that if the 40-foot-by-40-foot triangle really doesn't meet the intent of when you're looking down the road, to be able to make sure that that clears out, we want to make sure that our folks that are here in Hayden are safe.
Real quick, Donna, does that give us a legal issue or exposure, Kaitlyn, by having the city engineer approve that?
For those changes?
Yeah.
No, I think that we're looking for some guidance on it being clarifying the issue and being more helpful.
What I mean, does that, if something happens and he approves something that doesn't fit that, when I was reading that, okay, Melissa Shikner, that makes me feel bitter.
Yeah.
Okay. It doesn't... So hypothetically, Rob approves something different, and there's an accident. Is it our responsibility?
He would have used engineering judgment to come up with that, and there should be some documentation on it, so...
That's all we need. So, we're okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thanks, Donna.
It's just giving us like another, you know, way to actually put some engineering judgment into it instead of just having to go with what that says.
Right. No, I thought it went, but when I saw the wording last night or day before Sunday night, that was...
Because it's not a one-size-fits-all thing.
That's why. No, I appreciated the fact that the intent, that what we were requiring doesn't always meet the intent. That's why we went back. So, thank you, Donna.
Donna, can I ask real quick? Does this also affect existing problems that are already in the city?
Well, that's why we went back and forth and back and forth on it, like...
I think, you know, the state code clearly does because it's been in place forever and ever and ever, right? I don't know, that'd be a question for legal.
Anything new, anything, any new issue that came up in a vision trial, this would, vision triangle, this would impact.
But nothing, we're not going to grandfather, I mean, it's grandfathered, it's done, it's in, it's...
I don't think so. I don't think that things are grandfathered in.
Not with...
I think that if it's a problem, they have to meet our code.
Thanks. By the way, we're really grateful that you guys did this and didn't look to us to have to do it.
It's a lot of work, huh?
Thank you. Don't stop now, Donna, sorry.
The noise standards, I have always, since the first day I've worked here, thought the noise standards were in the really weirdest place, to have them buried in the middle of the zoning code, when noise standards are almost entirely addressed by the sheriff's department as nuisance. So, that's where they got moved. 4.3 is the animal code, and so we removed the definitions from Title 11 referencing animal clinic and animal kennels, and standards relating to boarding kennels out of the zone because they really are all part of the animal code, so they got moved there. Title 10.3 is private roads, and we added language identifying that should parking be reduced on a street, that the parking would have to be addressed within the subdivision 100% of the parking requirement. So, if you took and made a road, a private road, if you made the road with no parking, and you were required to have 20 parking places on that road, you would have to account for those 20 parking places somewhere. So, if you go back to that same house that has a double-car garage and two spaces in front of it, right, they would get three parking spaces. They're required to have two by code, so they have an additional parking space. So, if you only have 16 houses in there, and you've lost 20 parking spaces because they've come off the road, you'd be four spaces that you'd have to come up with somewhere on your property. You'd have to cop up four more parking spaces in like a joint public parking area. Generally speaking, that's what that code means. Title 12.9 is just going back and recognizing that we took the PUD code out of Title 11, so it's not referencing that anymore. And we do both townhome plats and condo plats. Condo plats don't have, like, they're the second story of a building that has a condo, so it has no specific land associated to it, but it might have a percentage of common space associated to it. Where a townhome plat has a house and lot dedicated specific to just that one dwelling unit. So, we added that townhome language to the same title. So, with all zoning text amendments, which this one is, kind of an overhaul, we do a comprehensive plan analysis. The imagined Hayden plan updates and the comprehensive plan specifically can be seen throughout all of the code amendments. I think you probably could take just about the entire comp plan and apply it to what we've done here, but generally speaking, this is a synopsis of the goals, policies, and actions that were specific. So, the comp plan is a living document and serves as a guide for development. Components of the comp plan are updated as necessary to reflect the community's vision. We're to maintain an attractive and balanced mix of land uses, densities, and housing types, ensuring the future character of the community and promote greater choices and opportunities. We preserve, protect, and strengthen the vitality and stability of existing neighborhoods. We promote an identity-rich downtown core that offers a mix of uses. We provide a balance of commercial uses in designated areas throughout the community, centered around established transportation corridors while protecting the character of adjacent land uses. Ensure that ordinances and policies do not violate private property rights, adversely impact property values, or create unnecessary limitations on land use. So, then the policies. Development should be compatible with the land use chapter of the comprehensive plan and fiscally responsible in supplying adequate transportation utilities and parks to newly developed areas. Promote nodes of development and density in the downtown and strategically along transportation corridors. Encourage rezoning and zoning text amendments to support the creation of strategic nodes, higher-density development, and transition zones between residential and industrial uses. Encourage small-scale retail activity, restaurants, and other service businesses, as well as attract a live-work-play lifestyle throughout a mixture of commercial and residential uses. Ensure land use and zoning compatibility related to development, density, and type occurring in close proximity to the Coeur d'Alene Airport, and explore the location and feasibility of the community center or core development in the downtown Hayden. Actions. Initiate zoning text amendments and update the zoning map accordingly to address density transition areas and nodes. Explore and study the feasibility and effectiveness of a zoning overlayer or zoning change to address incompatible uses within the airport flight path. Evaluate the residential density ranges as outlined in the municipal zoning code to determine appropriate housing density ranges, which encourage both infill development and new development in the appropriate places throughout the city, and foster infill and redevelopment in the commercial core. So, as I said at the beginning of this presentation, we did not do this in the closet. We worked really, really hard at being extremely transparent with everybody. We had five workshops with planning and zoning, and we had three joint workshops with city council. And again, we took comments from local developers, both residential and non-residential, architects, engineers, realtors, agencies, and utility providers. When we noticed this for public hearing with the planning and zoning, we noticed 31 agencies, the electric companies, the water jurisdictions, the airport, both garbage providers, the school districts, Harbs and Hayden Lake Sewer District, the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, Fish and Game, Department of Lands, Water Resources, and Transportation. We noticed the Cootney County Community Development, the surrounding cities of Coeur d'Alene, Dalton Gardens, and Hayden Lake. We noticed the Cootney County Fire and Rescue and Northern Lakes Fire Protection District, Cootney County Sheriff's Office, KMPO Lakes Highway District, and Post Falls Highway District, Penhandle Health District, all three of the fiber providers, and US Post So, we received comments that were in your presentation, and then we also received comments that came in after the public hearing and prior to the planning and zoning, prior, after the noticing closed and prior to the public hearing. But Idaho Department of Environmental Quality had no environmental impact comments related to the proposed code amendments, and neither did the Fish and Game, but they appreciated the opportunity to comment. So, there's like three kind of items that were noted in the memo that you received with the redline versions and the clean version. The first one was that corner that we talked about by adding that additional redline and leaving the code in there that's double underlined. When we uploaded to the website, we missed this piece that was added to Chapter 2, and if you looked at how many drafts of this there were out there as we were pushing this thing together, you... and if you looked at how many drafts of this there were out there as we were pushing this thing together, you, it's, anyway, it's amazing, there's a lot of copies. And then in Section 11.74, related to that, that section that we had missed previously, we identified that public buildings, complexes, and correctional facilities also had specific design standards that they would need to abide by that were in Chapter 2. And those comments were
Included.
approved. Those previous comments were all part of the Planning and Zoning Commission's written recommendation of approval. And then when I was uploading this table, I knew that the note was there and Melissa and I went hunting for it and couldn't find it and it got lost in a translation move. So, it was added to the website's version and as soon as we found it. But we needed to add in the multifamily in the central business district is allowed in the second or higher stories of a commercial mixed-use building or to the rear of the property as a secondary use to a primary use of commercial. And then the design standards for the CBD and where they're located and for the neighborhood commercial node.
With the changes in CBD, just to let you know, as I was reading it, it's almost good to say Commercial Business District now instead of CBD Oil. I don't mean that, I know it sounds odd, but it's like, because that's where CBD went, I know.
Okay.
So, I don't know if that's, you know what I mean, Melissa? You're looking at me.
Um, I don't, I don't think.
There's a CBD Oil.
Oh.
It's out.
Okay.
And it's not Commercial Business District and it's used a lot, so I just want to...
Right, okay.
I don't want a...
Totally different word.
Totally different. Central and cannabis are not exactly the same word, so.
No.
Okay.
So, the standards of approval is that the, that this Planning and Zoning Commission can recommend approval, modification, or denial. The city council can impose conditions upon the rezoning. Amendments to the zoning map and zone text shall be in accordance with the future land use map and the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan. Amendments to the zoning map and zone text shall align with the zone district's purpose and intent. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended approval of the amendment with the staff recommended conditions and changes and that recommendation and those minutes were included in your memo. And after the Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed the amendment at the public hearing, the commission shall forward a written recommendation to the city council, which you have. The city council shall approve or disapprove of the amendment with all of the staff recommended conditions and the changes.
Does anyone have any questions for Donna or the team with respect to these changes? I didn't know that it was that complicated until I looked at it and thought, this really makes it easier. I mean, if I was using it outside, these were good changes, so, do you have questions?
I just, Donna, you know, one of my pet peeves is homeowners associations who don't take care of street frontage. If we looked, and we've discussed this any further, at allowing something besides just grass that doesn't take any maintenance, so it doesn't look horrible because they don't take care of it?
If, if they're in a swale, there are BMPs that are available that allow for other types of stormwater.
So, it's a DEQ thing as well?
And we have areas that have used alternative swales in their area. Our type 2 street frontage right now talks about grass and, because it's, it's the most easy to maintain. I mean, grass and trees.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Can you move back to the slide, Donna, regarding correctional facilities? And do we have a definition of correctional facility as it's used there?
Yeah, it's in the definitions section.
Wood was back early.
Let me pull that up. You can search...
Caitlin, would you just read that, please?
You can search in our board book here, so I'm trying to search. A facility, and it's on page 7 of 145. A facility designed and used to house, sequester, or confine incarcerated individuals, persons subject to a pretrial order on probation or parole. Correctional facility shall conform to the provisions of Hayden City Code 11.74.
It was pretty, it was a big umbrella, based on your feedback and others, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I might mention and ask Donna as well, just in looking, and I didn't think of this before, but number 3 must not be located within 10 miles of another correctional facility. When you run that number from the county, I don't think you could put anything in the city if you do it as a crow flies.
Which is, I don't want to make any comment, but that was approved.
Yeah, so the issue would be whether or not, then that was something council gave direction on when we had gone over the potential code changes. So, that's kind of up for discussion as to whether we want to reduce that to 5 or, you know, planning for potential land that would come in in the unincorporated area was, is the thought on that, of thinking about it, if it could be in the city.
But the direction that council gave early on was 10 miles.
Right, so that's why we included it.
And that's why, don't, it's there. Yes, it's very specific.
Yeah.
And it did limit, I mean, I, thank you for bringing it up, we could look at other things too, but that was the direction given.
Yeah, I think you, and Caitlin can address this, if you put something on its face that wouldn't be allowed in the city,
So, yeah, the preclusion point of today is that 10 miles, you couldn't fit that under the zoning, under, excuse me, yeah, the land in the city limits today. Maybe with added annexations.
You guys are so good, yes, I know that that was the direction provided by council, if I understand it.
I know, we're just, that's the concern bringing up of just on its face, it precludes anything and so a challenge of it's just absolutely not even allowed. You have a process that allows potentially for a special use permit, conditional use permit.
But none is allowed within 10 miles.
Right, so you've just not even allowed...
So, if the city of Hayden expands four miles north or east, then we'll have that opportunity.
Yeah, it potentially comes in if lands in the unincorporated area are annexed, because the city limits are fluid and...
And that's where, that's where the concern will be later, but thank you for bringing that up. Any other questions from members of the council, please, Dick, I'm sorry.
Dick, let's go.
Please.
Is the definition of a jail a correctional facility? A jail, what is that, that's a little different than a correctional facility.
Right, we have it as a, as a different definition and that could be the argument certainly from Idaho Department of Corrections as well, jail isn't a correctional facility. I'd have to look at how the counties even define that. That would just be the concern is a potential, you're precluding it on its face and therefore that's invalid. That's what Brett means by the issue of we can't even get it in, it couldn't even be within 10 miles, therefore. It's kind of a fake process, right? Because you can't even get it, it's not even allowed here. But that's a good point Councilmember Panabaker brings up, is they're potentially two distinguishable facilities. And our definition of it, maybe not, it wouldn't even include the, the jail. I think it does because it says confines incarcerated individuals.
I, I will mention that Cootney County adopted that same language of the 10-year, or 10-mile distance. So, we're kind of consistent with the county. And I know that they ran it by their attorney, Pat, and they're good with it and I feel good about ours.
Yeah, that is, that is a copied from the, from the county ordinance.
We have another comment?
Donna, could you go to Policies, number 12 specifically, please? I've always struggled with this one because it makes it sound like we want to pack 500,000 people into an area and I know it doesn't mean that, but could you just give a quick explanation for anybody who, you know, is, as dense as I am, I guess?
Um, so, in the previous comprehensive plan, we identified neighborhood commercial nodes that never got constructed because there was never any code that allowed for them. So, we've got neighborhood commercial node design standards and the types of uses that were allowing for them to occur. And those nodes have been defined on, on various transportation corridors so that they would not, they would, they would fit in and they would meld into the area. Higher-density development identifies where you want the higher-density development. You don't necessarily want higher-density development in your commercial zones like between Government Way and Highway 95, but you do want a buffer between your commercial on Government Way and your single-family residential to the east. So, this identifies higher-density development that we're basically saying that in the central business district, you can have in the upper floors or to the rear, keeping that commercial along Government Way. Or if you're in the mixed-use, you can have a mixed-use building that has commercial and residential or you have resident, again, out here in the front on Government Way, and you have higher density, maybe two or three stories, of residential. And then east of that, you have mixed residential. So, those are single-family, two-family, three-family complexes that kind of blends that high density up by Government Way into that strictly single-dense, single-family residential in that sea of yellow that's on the comprehensive plan map. And so, that's how those transition zones are occurring between the commercial, I mean, just using Government Way because it's easier, moving them away from the commercial and blending them into the residential single-family neighborhoods. Also buffers the transportation noise and the noise of commercial as you're getting farther into the single-family residential.
Thank you very much.
And that was consistent with what we've done with the comprehensive plan, so this is just wording for it, so.
It keeps down on the incompatible uses being right next to each other if you kind of build in that transition zone.
By the way, I found out why, it's hard for, I have to turn my whole body to go left after the surgery, so that's why it's a beat on me if I don't look at it.
Oh, give me a break.
I found that out, that was true. I did, I did this and I got in trouble for it, so. I said, why isn't it?
He doesn't lie, good guy. That's all it is.
Thank you, any other comments? I just thought you'd appreciate that, I found that out last week. So, within that, and I tried to find it and Abby was very good in identifying it, we need a motion to read the ordinance by title only, that's what you need, right? Because that's the best way to go instead of a vote. That's what I mean, there was no more discussion, so.
If there's no other, if there's no other discussion.
That's what I mean, I asked and there wasn't.
Yeah, because you got to first suspend the rule of reading before you approve ordinance.
I'm doing that right now.
We don't want to probably do it on three separate...
I need a motion to read the ordinance by title only to suspend the rule of reading in full on three separate dates and to approve the first reading. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please Abby.
Councilmember Roder.
Yes.
Council President Satterfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Panabaker.
Yes.
An ordinance of the city of Hayden, a political subdivision of the state of Idaho, repealing Hayden City Code Title 11, Chapters 1 through 22, and replacing Title 11 with a new Title 11, Chapters 1 through 8, as follows. Chapter 1, general provisions; Chapter 2, zoning districts; Chapter 3, non-conforming uses; Chapter 4, general standards of development; Chapter 5, sign code; Chapter 6, planned unit development; Chapter 7, conditional use permits; Chapter 8, variance, amending Sections 4-1, nuisance; 4.43, Animal 6.14, visibility at intersections 10.3, private streets; and 12.9, condominium plating. Amending Sections with references to Title 11, 8-5-5, design standards; 9-4, sign regulations; 12-9-4, preliminary plat review, and repealing conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing for the publication of this ordinance by summary and providing an effective date. Do we have a motion that the ordinance be adopted on its having passed its first reading by title only and that it be published by summary incorporating the title as the core of the summary upon passage?
Mayor, can I just add to that, that adopting the ordinance would be with all of the staff recommended changes? Could that just be a note of that and then?
That that was included in this, I thought that was, and thank you though for the clarification.
They all are included, but we did have ones that are just the P&amp;Z approved with the staff recommended conditions, so if we can just...
So moved.
Thank you.
We have a motion, do we have a second? I'm going to do this, turn again, thank you. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing non-roll call vote, please Abby.
Councilmember Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember Panabaker.
Yes.
Council President Satterfield.
Yes.
Thank you. New Business, Presentation of 2020 Tree City USA Award by Garth Davis, IDL Community Forestry Assistant.
Hello, my name's Garth, I'm the Community Forestry Assistant for the Idaho Department of Lands.
You're going to go right there, Garth, and say that one more time and it's really nice to see you.
My name's Garth Davis, I'm the Community Forestry Assistant for the Idaho Department of Lands and I'm here today to present Hayden with their 19th Tree City USA Award. And this has been a really strange year and there were a lot of communities that couldn't pull it off even though the Arbor Day Foundation said, you don't even need to have an Arbor Day celebration. And you guys did it all, you guys had an Arbor Day celebration and you completed all the standards, so I just want to congratulate you.
I'd like to introduce you guys, since you said you guys, Suzie, Keno, would you like to go forward, please, at a safe distance? As you are the individual that allowed us to be able to be successful in this capacity.
Take a selfie there.
Yes, so, I, I know, and you are going to be in the picture, please, so, thank you. Garth, I just want to make sure that she was standing next to you. Do you want to stand right here next to the tree? Apparently she doesn't and I get to be mayor, so I get in trouble later, but it was, it was truly her efforts moved us forward and...
I agree, I agree. So, congratulations and it's really obvious that your community appreciates trees and cares for them just driving through it, you know, so it's really nice to see and hopefully next year, you guys will have a big celebration for your 20th Tree City USA.
Well, I don't know if you saw on the way in, but we have a lot of stickers, we're doing a sticker contest, so right now, that's what we're doing for this year.
This probably has some stickers for your...
How many trees did we cut down for those stickers?
Anyway, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Garth, can I get a picture of you and Suzie, please, and would you?
We usually get with the, oh, I thought the council got in there.
Do we have the flag?
Usually we have an award and a flag and everything, usually.
Whatever council members would like to join for the picture, that'd be great.
Yeah, lots of you.
We'll leave that to the big jaws.
Suzie did all the work. Suzie did all the work.
Yeah, she did all the work. Do you want to wear the Tree City USA hat then?
Do you know, she would look great. Would you, please? Thank you. That is so good. Now it's a real picture.
Come on in, guys.
Are they going to recognize you on America's Most Wanted?
There's another 10, we're up to like 5. We need to start keeping 10.
Garth, thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
4B, action item, request to provide sewer outside of the city limits. Donna, while you're walking, I want to do, no, I'll wait till my comment section after, so that's okay. It's all yours.
We received a request from Gargoyle Granite. They met with us, they were trying to figure out how to annex so that they could get sewer and expand... and expand their site. They're located right here. So we've had, um, interest from.
Would you, by right here, for those that aren't, what is the?
North of Bentz Road, west of Highway 95.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So as you can see, the area in pink is what's in the city limits, and so they're just kind of not quite there, they're just not, not quite attached. So I put and blew it up a little bit. And with some parcel lines on there, and, you know, should the area to the west annex, then they could annex with them and be contiguous to the city. And should the area to the east annex, um, then they would also be able to, you know, go right across Highway 95 and be contiguous to the city. Um, and should the area to the south annex, they could get annexed as well. So they're not opposed to annexation. You have my memo and you have their letter of request. But they're 250 feet from Hayden North List Station, plus or minus, from corner to corner. And in order to expand their site, and Cory Trapp is here, and Jamie, right, is here as well, um, from Gargoyle Granite, if you have questions specific, they're here to answer them. They really want to connect to city sewer because, um, they can't expand their drain field, and it would be really, um, sad to see somebody, Gargoyle Granite used to be down here on Hayden Avenue, where's you for a while or whatever? Yeah.
Honey Suckle, yeah, on that corner, Honey Suckle.
And then, um, moved out in that location so that they had room to expand. It would be really unfortunate for us, for them to not be able to expand their site and have to move elsewhere. They kind of fit the area and they fit the land and they want to connect, so that's the request, and Rob has told me I'm supposed to give you two thumbs up.
I saw, because this was, because my initial, I don't mean this in a bad way, and I don't vote unless, though, there won't be a tie tonight anyway unless somebody divides himself in half. So initially, it was interesting because I thought, this doesn't make sense, then you look at the map and go, well, they're, they're surrounded on all three sides, it's just not contiguous. And from an environmental standpoint, which I, I know within your program, it makes all the sense in the world, because I want to protect the aquifer. Not that that's, but in essence, that's kind of where my thought was, so is that where Rob was on his two thumbs up?
He just, they want to annex, when they're able to annex, they will annex. Um, it's a great economic growth area there for their site, and it really makes sense for them to connect to sewer, so.
It's not a barrier.
So how does that work?
We've got three different options.
I just need to know process. How does someone not in the city get sewer? How do we bill? How do we work with them? How do we coordinate? Because they're not in the city limits.
We have property outside the city limits now that we sewer.
I just, this is for the record, so you're doing great. I set that up for you.
Yeah, we have an agreement with them, and that is one thing Donna has mentioned about, um, requirement of having to enter into a development agreement, which I'm sure these gentlemen know they met with staff over, um, and then we already serve, we have that with other properties we currently serve, so that can be set up through the city.
And you're doing great, Al, and you were super to jump in, but, and how is that working from a developmental, that was to me the issue. How is that working? Are, are those developmental plans being followed? Do we have any teeth if they're not? It's more process than it is specific.
So on the development agreement, part of that would be, um, hey, you're going to get sewer and be a customer, and you're going to pay a connection fee and an O&amp;M. So they will be a normal user of sewer, just like anybody else in, in the city of Hayden. And then also, when they have the ability to annex, they will consent to annexation.
And from a legal standpoint, you're okay with the process?
Yeah, I am, just because the city has other, like I said, other properties we serve. I, on the issue, if we've had an issue, I'm not aware of one.
I'm not aware of any either.
Okay.
And this one.
I just, for this, I just want to make sure that we covered our bases on that.
Yeah, they're, they're treated as just a normal user of the sewer.
And then Harps has that same jurisdictional responsibilities, different than the city of Hayden might.
Correct, and they'll pay a, they'll pay a city connection fee and a Harps connection fee.
Yep.
And they'll build the sewer line from the list station to their.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, just the infrastructure too.
That's where I was, it's okay.
All of that.
Just the actual connection, they have to pay both and they'll pay.
And they understand that they belong in the city, they just can't get here. Because they don't need the code for annexation.
And that's what I can't, I, I procedurally can't ask them directly, so last, with you, your discussions with the applicant, they understand the infrastructure responsibilities associated with this? And, and in your discussions with them, I can't even look at you, Cory, that, that, that they're comfortable, that's right, that they're comfortable, that they're comfortable with that?
Yep, yep, we've had meetings with them.
Okay.
Yep.
There was a reason for that, it's okay. Having asked my questions and gotten clarification, does any member of council have questions for Donna? Or I guess in this case, please?
Well, normally, we don't want to do that, that's a no-no.
That's why.
Uh, do outside our boundaries, and with services like that, because you're cutting your own throat by doing it, but not in this case. This is a, this is a thing, and I know that the people out in that area, when the time comes to annex, to get in and provide all the services, that they will want to do that, it's to their benefit to do it, and a development agreement's the right thing to do. So I, when you're looking for a motion, I would make one or I'll second one.
Okay, we'll get to that. Any other discussion or questions?
Donna, could you go back to the map, please? So, is, what's the size of that property, out of curiosity? If they're on.
Yeah, seven.
Okay, so the, the requirement is that you need to have sewer just for that parcel, period. Do you, have you owned any land outside of that parcel?
Panhandle won't let them expand their operation, um, on their drain field, and they don't have a place to put another drain field.
Yeah, my, my question is, do they own any land outside that parcel that's adjacent or near to that parcel?
No.
Not that I understand.
No, that's the only piece.
So this is specifically for your business needs?
Yes.
You're not looking at somehow adding some residential lot somewhere and connecting that you're purely for your business?
Can we get comment from the applicant in this regard? I just want to be sure.
Sure, yeah.
Great. Does the architect have any comments that he would like to make? Please state your name and who you're representing, please.
Cory Trapp, Lomo Trapp Architects, 8382 North Wayne Drive. I'm representing Mr. Jenkins from Gargoyle Granite. He has a seven-acre parcel here, he'd like to do some further development, expand his business that he has. He'd also like in the future to potentially put some other rentable spaces along the 95 frontage as part of this, but he can't do any of that further development without having sewer, due to Panhandle Health not allowing him to expand his existing, he's at his maximum capacity for his drain field that's on the property now. So he, without doing sewer, he can't do any more expansion. He wants to stay here, he's got a lot of money invested in this location, he doesn't want to have to move, but if he can get sewer, he may have to look at that, he's actually explored that. We have talked to the adjacent neighbors, neither one of them is interested in, in, um, annexation at this time. We've talked to the, the owner to the north with the, the gravel pit. He is interested in the future, but he wants the city to approach him, he's not going to approach the city. So, and his, his, his interest has to do with the extension of, of the road.
Please let him know that the city doesn't approach, so, that's okay.
Right.
Historically.
So he's, he's kind of, he's, he's caught in a rock, between a rock and hard spot, hard spot where he really wants to expand in his business, but he can't, and he can't get sewer without being contiguous, because the neighbors don't want to annex.
And like I said, this one, when I initially saw this on the agenda without doing, you know, before I did, it's like, I'm very, I was very hesitant to even figure it out, and then have, after having studied the proposal, I don't know any other solution, you know, that made sense, so, so.
And we, we've had multiple discussions with the city.
That's where we're at, that's where staff's at, too. It's good for everybody to allow him to expand.
Well, he's already there, already doing business.
Yeah.
Already doing everything that, that he can do, and that's, and it's an expensive next step, so.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
So by, by granite, right?
Question, Cory, if I may. You said something that I didn't read in our information, that he's proposing or will have rental units on 95, is that part of the, kind of the plan?
It's, it's kind of a master plan, the thing is to, is to build more manufacturing here, but the future would be to build maybe some potential for units in here, you know, similar to what's in, um, Warren Kay, uh, as a future development. But his immediate need is to expand his manufacturing facility here, and he wants to get all his granite inside, because it, out of the weather and better protect it, and just have more room for his equipment. They're on top of each other right now, um, and is really inefficient with what he's doing.
Okay, because that, that's what I read was, how I took it was, he wanted, is he's expanding his granite business, but then the future is to add more commercial space to, to develop.
That would be a future goal down the road?
Right.
And, and, and if that's part of the, I mean, that could even be part of the annexation agreement if that's, you know.
We can't talk about annexation now.
Right.
I think he's talking about the development agreement.
It could be part of the development agreement.
We can talk about that in there.
Correct, correct.
Councilmember Roder, I was with you, I did not, there was nothing in there to indicate anything other than an expansion of an existing business or the ability to be able to allocate the necessary space to be able to run the business properly, so I didn't see anything in there with respect to any other expansion or development. Okay, uh, any other questions? Please?
Question for Donna.
Okay.
I can't let you get away without a question for me, Donna, geez. I don't want you going home disappointed, so. What's that currently zoned?
Well, it's in the county.
It's in the county.
Right, but what do they have it zoned at?
I'm not sure.
I don't know.
It's commercial on our future land use map.
It is.
So, that's all we really care about.
Next question. So. Okay, yeah, that's all I have, thank you. I, I, one other comment. I did talk to our attorney about conditions in letting them hook up to sewer, but, um, I, I think it's a lot smarter to wait until possible annexation and probably a lot cleaner for the property owner and the city, so.
Yeah, this was an environmental, the, the big thing here, commercial was, was important, you're not trying to do any different, you're just trying to get it inside, and from an environmental standpoint, it was the best fit, in my mind, because you don't have any other options. I mean, it was, it's an odd situation, and I'm sorry that you find yourself in that predicament, because it is. And, and we're grateful that you would acquiesce to the needs of the sewer requirements, more so than the city, because, I mean, if that, if you decide that that's where you want to go, so.
So Donna, does the, does the applicant have any weird stuff that Harps is going to?
No. Not that we could, no.
No different than the, than when they were here in Hayden?
Right.
Correct? Are you doing, are you discharging anything?
Chemicals down, no.
I mean, that's probably where we need to go, but it's a Harps question, but, okay, thanks, Melissa. Any other questions?
Just one question about when you do cut your, your granite and you use whatever kind of saws, do you use any lubricants within your liquid system that you discharge?
We use water.
Purely water?
Yeah. They have a recycling, they actually recycle water, water, to cut down on their water, their water bill.
Right.
So they capture the water, filter it, filter the dust out of it.
And reuse it?
It's a slow, slow system.
Good, okay, thank you.
So do we have a motion to approve, I want to make sure, uh, approve the, the request contingent upon the applicant entering into a development agreement?
So moved.
Two seconds.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please Abby.
Councilmember Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember Panabaker?
Yes.
Council President Satterfield?
Yes.
Thank you. Donna, are you running the next? Thank you. And this made it a lot easier, the manner in which you did this with the team, and, and I need to again compliment our team, it made it a lot easier, because this could have not gone in the manner in which you wanted, you know, just by, but everything that you've done, everything that you've done as a team, made it much easier moving forward, so thank you. You bet. 4C, Action Item, Approval of Resolution Adopting Cootney County All Hazards Mitigation Plan 2020 Update. By the way, as I read this at 11 o'clock at night, I read it as migration plan.
You're like, what's that?
And I thought, and that, it was like, where are we going now?
Going for the bird.
Yep.
The wall, yes, the wall.
So.
So this is a, a simple, uh, hopefully a simple look at, um, a plan that the county has had in place for quite some time. They update it every few years, and we are, um, usually every five years, and the city is a signatory. It, it has a section in there that talks about the city of Hayden's areas, the emergencies that we could face, and they just updated a few things in there. It's also, it's important for us, if we want to receive any grant funding for the emergency items that were, that were, uh, part of, uh, approval of this mitigation plan. So it's, it's part of their overall emergency, um, look at the county and what we need to do, and so, uh, to me, it's, uh, we've looked at it, we do have our emergency committee, um, and that group did look at changes, it's been months ago, um, and we didn't realize that, uh, that we hadn't approved the resolution. Usually the county sends you the information, and this time they haven't, until we were going to apply for a grant, and they said, well, you need to approve this, and so we'd like to move forward with this, there's not any, uh, really any risk or cost, um, associated with being a signatory.
We are going to adopt their resolution, their, their volume one, and do, and then the last part.
And volume two.
Huh?
And volume two.
And volume two, thank you. But then the other side is on the back, "All Other Resolutions and City Council Actions of the City of Hayden, Which Conflict With the Provision of This Resolution Are Hereby Repealed to the Extent of Such Conflict."
So the one we.
Are we just putting a white flag up and waving it and?
No, so the one we adopted five years ago, this is just replacing that. That's all it is.
Okay, because I didn't, I mean, once you get me reading, okay, because it looked like we are acquiescing all of our actions, responsibilities, and input to the county.
No, just, all we're doing is what that, the language in that resolution means, is to the extent that whatever the resolution we adopted five years ago conflicts with this, this supersedes, because we're adopting the new plan.
Okay, that.
Yep.
Then why don't you just say it? Triple negatives.
Hey, this one supersedes, period.
That's right, that's right. Well, you already got your time on the last, on this one, so it's okay.
That's, hey, that's largely Donna, all credit goes Donna on that ordinance.
I was grateful. Do we have any other questions for Kalen or Brett with respect to Action Item 4C, Approval of Resolution Adopting Cootney County All Hazards Mitigation Plan?
It is mitigation, right?
Yes, no, and I did, I wanted the council to know that as I was reading it, I thought, what is going on? So, do we have a motion to approve the Resolution Adopting Cootney County All Hazards Mitigation Plan 2020 Update?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Sure.
We have a second.
Yes.
Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please Abby.
Council President Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Panabaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Roder?
Yes.
Thank you. Let me start 4D. One of the things, um, that, that as a council and as a mayor, we have a tremendous amount of expertise and intellectual input, um, and partnership with respect of the members of the city council.[1763.25] And it was my intent early on to have, and I think Mayor McIntyre's before and Roger Satterfield is the president of the council, but the council members take an active role in, in, on committees and with issues associated with the city of Hayden. And it is imperative in my mind that members of the city council become involved in and understand at a high level the workings of the city. And, and that has been manifested with Councilmember Roder's work on Hurrah, Councilmember Panabaker, Council President Satterfield's work with sewers, highways, senior center. These are issues, and Hurrah and sewer in my mind are two of the, well, they're all important, but two of the most difficult. And it was always my desire as a mayor that council members had the opportunity to be able to get involved with all of these areas as best as we can so that they have a working knowledge of what's going on. Councilmember Roder, Councilmember Panabaker have both served on their committees for, I know, five years. I had a discussion about a year ago with Councilmember Roder and Councilmember Panabaker to be able to say, I'd love to be able to see partnerships and balances and understandings of various organizations. And so it was always an intent that, that council members have the opportunity to be able to serve in and work with other high-level committees, organizations, groups. And, and so it's with that, that I then want to turn the time over to Council President Satterfield.
I've served on a lot of boards over the years. And one of the things that I always resisted was experience is important to me, but how do you gain that experience and that's experience it? So, when I was on the fair board, the county commissioners wanted to put term limits. And I resisted that, but it soon became apparent to me how valuable it is to have some sort of a turnover, if you will. And, and to put people, let people learn more about what's going on. In our case, it's sewer, it's Hurrah, it's the senior center, there's a lot of different things. And I agree with the mayor, I mean, it's just absolutely imperative that city council's involved in it. But I also think that there should be some sort of rotation so that we all become more knowledgeable. Because we, you know, as human beings, we get in a rut. You know, I, I've been the alternate on the sewer board for, I don't even know how long, quite a while. And not that I'm bored with it by any means, but there's a lot of other things that I don't totally understand that I'd like to be involved in. You know, I'm involved in senior center. I, I had no idea until I got involved in the senior center what they really did. I thought they were, you know, put on these nice little benefits to make money, but they, they help so many people. And not just seniors, but mostly seniors and stuff. So, anyway, I, you know, I had proposed to the mayor that we used to, once a year, get assignments to the different things, to, to different things. And it revolved, it changed and stuff because we seen how valuable that was to the city and the council. Because you, i- i- if you are on the sewer board or on Hurrah and if you go down, you don't have any backup, basically, for the city. So if you mix and match and turn that over a little bit, now you're creating backup as well as additional knowledge.
So, so with that, Council President Satterfield is working with members of the council to be able to allow for that overlap of knowledge. And I believe, moving forward, it's, it's really important that members of the council and the mayor have a working knowledge of the organizations that, that really impact our city. So, Council President Satterfield, do you have any recommendations at this time? Or, or any actions that you would like to be able to discuss specifically? I know with Councilmember Delang not here, that that was one, but you've had the opportunity to have discussions with her.
I've talked to, talked to Councilmember Delang, she is, would like to do KMPO.
Okay.
I, I think Dick, you're, do you have any objection to that whatsoever?
No.
I didn't think, you know, there'd be a, and I wasn't up to volunteer for it, so, you know.
That's a lot, there's.
It's a very, very important part of what goes on around here, especially with the growth and everything that's going on. I mean, it's essential, we're involved in it, absolutely.
So legally then, do I need to make a recommendation? Or is it something that's voted on to just have?
Jerry, yeah, so, yep.
Is that?
Yeah, so you, for you to make a recommendation to, to have Jerry.
It's not a voting, so that's not, that's just me signing?
No, that's you saying that and then they vote on the, for the KMPO.
Do I, okay, do we? So then, then I'm happy to do that. Then the recommendation from Council President Satterfield is that Councilmember Delang replace Councilmember Panabaker on the KMPO board. Do I have, so I can't make a motion? That's the recommendation?
But that's your recommendation.
So I don't have unilateral, as mayor to just do it?
I think we have always done, and somebody else can correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't know that we've done at Harbs or a KMPO one. I feel like we've treated them all in that.
Which I think is fine, I just want a clarification.
Realm, like you do with P&amp;Z and like you do with Hurrah.
So there's, and I like that.
Has there ever been a distinction in that, on the commissions? I've always just treated them always the same.
And, and since it's out on, I think it's hugely important to, for transparency and moving forward to get everything involved. So that is the recommendation and I'd like the council to confirm that recommendation. Is there a motion to confirm that recommendation?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing, unroll call vote, please, Abby.
Council President Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember Panabaker?
Yes.
Thank you. And then further actions or appointments, we're going to move forward. But I wanted to make sure that the public understood that, that we have a responsibility to be able to understand the ramifications of Hurrah. Councilmember Roder served on that board. And it was interesting, because of the legal responsibilities, he has done that as an individual. And, but, but we'd like others to be able to have that exposure. And then with sewer being such an important component and, and moving forward, it was, it's also my intention to have others like Councilmember Roder, it doesn't matter. That's going to be up to council and, and President Satterfield. But to be able to, just an example of having that exposure then moved over to sewer. So we'll look forward to that, those appointments or recommendations then, in the future. I do have now five, instead of a report, I wanted to report to the city on something that, that was sickening to me. An individual, an 82-year-old female who's living alone, I will not share her name from here, had a political flag on her door. And that, an individual or groups of individuals went to the door, tore down the flag and then dumped feces and garbage on her yard. Stopped. I don't know where to look. I don't know where the camera is for this one. We live in the city of Hayden, in America, the United States of America, it is a republic. An 82-year-old woman that has lived by herself for 16 years put something on her door that she is allowed to do. And it appears that others that don't agree with that flag or banner decided that they would take it into their own hands to deface her home and her yard. We should be doing the opposite to 82-year-old women, to 50-year-old women, to 30-year-old women, to 40-year-old men, to 15-year-old children. We should allow and give our lives, if necessary, to protect them and their ability to express themselves. I don't know how many people will hear these words or see them, but we have a responsibility as humans, as citizens, to act appropriately. So if those individuals that lived in Hayden that decided to take this into their own hands, I would like you to go back to the house that you defaced and vandalized and fix it. And ask what you could do to improve and help that 82-year-old woman and treat her as if she is your mother with respect and kindness and admiration. And may I not hear any more of this silly, irresponsible, immature, dangerous actions of hate that have no place in the city of Hayden or in the state of Idaho or in the United States of America. I hope I was clear enough.
Can I say something?
Please.
One thing, I think if those people had a conscience and decided to do the right thing, they should get notified, the woman that they're coming, or tell, have somebody go with them because you don't want to scare her to death by having them show up there again, because that could very well happen.
Thank you.
And the other thing is, this is exactly why when we read the, or see the news in this country today, the garbage that we have to watch on television all the time that's going on all over the country. It starts in places like this, of people being tolerant of crap like that. We're going in there and raising hell with that lady who doesn't hurt anybody and has the right to put on her door whatever she wants. So if we don't start stopping that stuff here, it's just going to get worse until we have a Washington DC-type situation going on all over. So we need to do something. Thank you for saying those words, by the way.
Welcome.
That's my report.
So mayor, was that reported to Cooney County Sheriff's Office?
It was, and I hope that they act. I, I did talk to Sheriff Norris about it. And I think it's also going to be reported to, to the Coraline Press and others. This was, this is, this is, this is, I, people are going to laugh. This is hate stuff. This isn't.
Absolutely.
And, and how dare they do that?
That's right.
So.
But that's the new politics right now. That's what's.
That's not politics, yeah.
What it does is it shuts down free speech and we can't have that.
No.
Our country has to have it.
See, for both sides, thank you. And I'm glad you brought up free speech. We lived in Wisconsin and we are conservative by nature and our voices were tempered because we were in the minority and others. And I thought, how dare they not allow us to speak? And yet it's just the opposite, it's becoming just the opposite here. And it's like, how dare they? I've been to Normandy, I walked the beaches of Normandy and was so grateful that people gave up their lives so that we can express our, our ideas and thoughts. So, I'm sorry, I had, I, I didn't know where to put that, I'm glad I waited till later.
I'm glad you did it.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to mention, I did get a call back from the county. I haven't been able to listen to the message during this meeting, so I'll share that after.
Thank you. Any other, I know Brett, you sent your report, any other calendar items that you wanted to share?
Yeah, just a couple of items. I do want to thank Donna and Melissa and them, the, the work on the code sections that they went through. Again, quite a bit of effort going through. I think Donna really likes doing that stuff, though. I, she's not, she's unique that way, I think she really likes it. But anyways, I thought they did a great job and I appreciate their efforts there. Tomorrow night, you're all invited and the public's invited to the Miles and Government Way Open House. It's in here at 5:30, so it's that intersection. So you can come and see maps and drawings and see what the plan is for that intersection. So I'll also mention that, I think Abby or Sean, they were able to put it on our new electric sign. And so that's been a kind of a fun new thing that we can utilize out front to, to put meetings and other announcements on there. And so hopefully the public will look at that and appreciate that. May 11th, and I don't know if you heard from Bob Norris, but, so the sheriff wants to start a discussion on public safety and police services and perhaps having the city.
Don't go, we don't.
Okay, so be there, hopefully you can all be there at 4 o'clock, so we'll do a workshop prior.
Was that going to be a workshop? I told him it would just be, I mean, that's okay.
It's more of an informal type of presentation, so it'd be a workshop at 4 o'clock.
But I don't want to put words, he'll do what he does and.
Yeah, I've talked, talked with him and kind of seen what he wants to present, so.
Okay. I would hope that all of us have the chance to be there for that.
And Jerry's, Jerry's not here. And if somebody can't make it, so that's May 11th, our next, not the next meeting, but the meeting after that.
May 11th, it'll just be an hour.
The first, the first meeting in May, so May 11th at 4 o'clock. And then we are starting the budget process. And so the different departments will be meeting on April 19th, so next Monday, just to kind of go through the larger items that they want to see. And then we'll put that in a written form and give that to you. And then we were talking a little, just briefly, about setting a time to meet. The mayor was gracious enough, on the administrative side, we put that, that budget together for you. We wanted to give the council some time to get the information from the departments and also come with whatever information you have and have like a, a council retreat and get information for the budget. And we're looking to do that on the 27th, so the next meeting at 3 o'clock. So hopefully y'all can make that. I just mentioned, since Jerry's not here, we did receive a draft. There, there wasn't a number, there's still not a number on it, on a property tax bill. The mayor and I have it. It's, it's slightly different from before, but I'm still concerned as I read through it in more detail, there's restrictions to what we can do as far as the amounts. It does, the good part of it, it does increase the amount on the homestead exemption at, at the beginning for those that qualify for that. But then it goes back into trying to restrict the amount on what we would get under new construction and under our 3%.
But it does, I mean, the big part is it, 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 it doesn't take away everything else that we were having issues and discussions with, but it raises the exemption from 100,000 to 125,000.
Yeah.
And it, or, or keeps it at 50%. That's, that's in the Senate bill now. And, and the other restrictions with respect to allocation of funds were directional, not legislative, as I understood, as I read it. And maybe I'm wrong, but.
We can, we can talk about it more, it's, it's a very fluid thing. But the interesting part is, I've heard that, and maybe one of you knows, I've, I've heard that the legislators were going to end on Friday. That's the last I heard. And that's an awful quick turnaround to take any comment on a bill that doesn't even have a number yet. And so if they're going to leave Friday, then nothing may happen with this, we'll see. And that's it. If you, if you do ever, you know, on the electronic sign that we purchased, if you have something ever that you think we should be putting on there, let us know. Sean, Michael, Abby are ones that can add, they can do it actually from home. It's kind of cool, cool to, to add information. And even though we had GoZags on there, they almost, almost did it. We had to pull that off. So anyways, thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you Brett, any other comments from members of the council?
I have a couple, mayor, one, just, just kind of a heads up. In our last Hurrah meeting yesterday, we were, there was the discussion about the school district property, for Hayden Lake Elementary School, and that there was interest by the, the senior center to perhaps do something. I don't, I don't think that's any big news to anybody, but the, there was an attempt to try to delay the bid opening on that property, which then was, the school district ruled that they would not extend that opening. Where the discussion went, and that's why I want to bring it to the attention of the city council, is that Hurrah is thinking that it would like to contact the successful bidder on that property to see what could be worked out. And, and it wasn't that, let, let's look for any kind of project that you want to do. It was more specific to, you know, is there? It was more specific to, you know, is there, is there an interest to work on doing something with the old school, with whoever the successful bidder is? I brought up the issue of the cost, and that the school district put together over a million-dollar list of fixes on that property, because they're, they're thinking about the senior center somehow. And it was asked that if Melissa, and I think, who was going to, oh, Rob was going to ask Melissa to send that list out.
Yeah, I don't, he mentioned that to me last night. I don't have, I don't have that.
Oh, you don't?
I don't. Yeah, I think it must be Brett.
I have it in a file that they gave us a while ago.
If you could get it to Rob, then Rob's going to send it out to all members of Hura. And I bring that up because they wanted to, Steve and John Young, they can look at numbers and see if that's real or not. They wanted that as a reference, just in maybe discussing something with the municipal, just, so just to be aware that.
Are you, just for the record, you're talking about the amount of money that was presented to the school board in, in terms of repairs that we attended?
Correct. Yeah, that's the number, because that was the point. And what I brought up is to look, you know, if you do purchase that, you know, number one, how, how are you going to operate, and what are those costs? But more importantly, you've got an incredible remodel cost to do whatever you want to do.
And the infrastructure.
Yeah, so that's, that's, just to be aware, Hura has some interest.
I've heard about it, I don't have it.
Yeah, it has some interest in that.
Thank you.
So, and lastly, Brett had asked me about the American Rescue Plan Act money that the city of Hayden will, will receive. Now, the question is, is it coming directly from the federal government? Is it coming from the state? How can you use that money? And Brett, and so I read that by my wife. And that's why the congressional offices are there to help clarify, find out information. So she did run that back to DC. And what came back was the rules are being written currently. So I have nothing to give the city to try to anticipate the use of those funds or even when we're going to get them. But, but she's still working on it. So if we get some information, that may help us in our plan.
And for those, that's the infrastructure side of the things that are moving forward in Washington, right? That's the.
That's where we're going to get 3 point some million that's designated. We don't know when or what we can use it for. And it would be helped, helpful to know how to plan for it.
I was going to say, thank you for that. And please thank Karen, because that's, we want to be on the, if, if in fact it's coming, we want that money to be used efficiently and correctly and responsibly.
And quickly, because there's going to be a backlog to get people to be able to do the contract work.
But our team put together. Perfect. Thank you, Councilmember Roder. I was going to ask, it's so funny. I was going to ask if you had any comments. And if not, if you'd like to offer the closing prayer. That isn't, it's just been one of those days.
Probably can't do that here.
That's right, that's right.
I do have some comments, though, in relation to the school property. Did talk to the ops manager today, you know, and they were informed they weren't going to amend their bid for the senior center and stuff. But comment that was made was, they are either going to accept the high bid or no bid. So that kind of, at our last facilities meeting and stuff, we had discussed a little bit, there may be a developer that was interested in being creative with that property. And if they're only going to accept the high bid or no bid, that may take them out of the, out of the play. But I'm glad to hear Matt has talked to her about it and stuff. I would like to suggest, just to put in everybody's mind, you have the main school up front, but you have the little school behind them that was built in 1919 or something. And.
You're talking about on Hayden Avenue, when it sits back?
Yeah, and I have been told, they looked into it. It is a movable building. So whoever gets this bid, I just want to throw it out there, would the city be interested in trying to, you know, we tried to do something with the steel cabin, hasn't worked out. Is this something the city may want to look at to move, retain, put in the park? Or, you know, am I just dreaming on?
Right now, there's a lot to do before that, so, yeah. It's in the school district's hands.
But I want to start putting in people's minds for, for thinking right now, so. And lastly, is the folks upstairs, Donna, Melissa, Alan, Rob, and some of the other folks that I don't know so well. What a great group. I'm doing in addition to my home, so I had to, you know, do all the paperwork and everything like that.
Permit number one?
You know, I sent my wife down here. So I'm a coward. Okay, so I sent my wife down here. And she just came back just beaming on, wow, she's never been to a place that has been so helpful. And in a good mood. She's, she said it's, you know, when she worked for the county, public employees get yelled at a lot. And so it kind of puts you in a bad mood at times. And she said, there's just, was none of that. And she was so impressed. So I may start coming myself instead of sending her, but don't count on it.
I was going to say, if it worked out really well, sending her, I would continue that process. So you're not going to just keep putting them in the bottom of the pile?
Oh, no. I checked on it.
Kudos to everybody up there. Just a great group.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Meeting is adjourned.
All right.
Donna, did, I thought you wanted to talk a little.